Full time for Wednesday, August the 4th, 2021. And we'll begin with all business and approving of the minutes of the July 28th meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I've listened to the council time recording as well as read the minutes. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving to new business, bridge replacement. Counselor Bowerman.
I'm sorry, there we go. I had requested at our meeting last week that the council may wish to consider the timeliness right now of giving some statement of our position on the bridge replacement project. Because it seems that most of the surrounding other jurisdictions are doing so or have already done so. And so it was suggested that I put together a list of topics that maybe we could cover, which I did. And then that expanded into explaining what is really just my, my thoughts on those particular topics. But at any rate, I think that it would be good if this pointed to a final form of a, of a resolution that we could send to the commissioner committee that is working on the bridge replacement project. So those are my initial thoughts, and I hope that that draft, although it is just totally draft, is helpful in some way.
Thank you. I found it helpful. And I believe we had a, a previous resolution prior to your sitting on the council as well that addressed at least some of these things. So I would open it up for discussion. The council has seen this. I don't know if you've had a chance to, to read it through and what your thoughts are.
Well, I'll be happy to open it up. And I just got finished reading the prior resolution, I think it was dated in 2018, that Kathleen forwarded to us. And so I guess I would start with that because I really think it's wrong. It really focuses on the wrong things. I mean, there's certainly some good in it. We all know there's congestion and I've been tilting at this since I first joined the council in my first meeting on the RTC where it just basically was met with blank stares when I mentioned planning for another corridor. Because it's palpably obvious to anyone who comes through this area, drives through it, whether you're driving long haul freight or just trying to get from south of Portland to north of Vancouver. It's dramatically clear. There just aren't enough crossings. There's, whether it's a tunnel, hopefully we'll get ferry service, which will really have very little impact overall. Or another bridge. I mean, the corridor is the, another corridor is the only thing that will ever get to the issue of congestion. Not having a dedicated bus lane for C-Trans or adding, removing and then adding another I-5 bridge. That's never going to improve the capacity of the corridor because it's basically maxed out. I mean, we put in metering lights, which, you know, may dramatically improve transit time by 30 seconds or maybe a minute. But, you know, no matter how many lanes you put and replace the I-5 bridge with, if the entire corridor, both north and south, especially south through the Rose Quarter and through other areas in Portland, it is just maxed out. And the only way to get to it is to plan, as has been envisioned more than 20 years ago, another corridor. So we really should at some point make a public statement about what really will bring relief from freight mobility to reducing our carbon footprint, reducing transit time. We're only going to ever get to that if we can plan, design and fund another quarter. Now, I recently brought this up again with the RTC and the director there. Actually, I thought, I saw some daylight. I saw some traction because of one issue. Our infrastructure package about to be passed by Congress. We had hoped last administration it would be, but we're inching closer. And hopefully we'll see what the House does with the Senate bill once they get finished with the Senate. But we may have a, a funding opportunity, if nothing more, than to play, pay for the very cumbersome and comp plan costs that would be involved in planning for an additional corridor. So we should be ready to ask Congress and tee that project up because we need to make a statement about the need. We are so far behind in the greater Portland-Vancouver metropolitan area. You look across the nation, we have some of the worst congestion from a freight mobility point of view and from a personal driving point of view and from a commuter point of view of anywhere in the nation. We need to address that as political leaders and make a statement. So I'm all in favor of coming out with a resolution and not one that, that reads the same way as the one passed in 2018. Because I, I think that was just furthering replacement of the I-5 bridge, which should happen as a matter of course, when necessary. I mean, every capital project is life limited to some extent. So maintenance and replacement should be normal capital planning. And, and I would just mention that the two bridges that comprise the Interstate 5 Bridge are, although they look the same, are very dissimilarly situated. One is much older than the other, or another way of saying that. One is much younger than, than the other. So they don't necessarily need a capital replacement at the same time today. So anyway, those are my general comments. And I look forward to us coming to agreement on a resolution to state what I think the public demands, another corridor.
Other comments?
So are we talking about?
Counselor Olson.
Karen, Counselor Bowerman, I think you were talking about a discussion around the I-5 Bridge project. Sounds like Counselor Mevigeek's talking about a third corridor, which are not the same thing. The bridge is 100 years old. One span is 100 years old. So I don't know what the timing would be in terms of proper repair and replacement. But this conversation is old and tired and has been had for the last 10 years. The replacement I-5 Bridge is the priority and it's the priority for the federal government. And that's going to be the, the path forward. We can sit here and talk about, you know, all the things that we would like. And I think we should as, as political leaders, which is what we tried to do in 2018. Sorry, Counselor Mevigeek, if you think this is totally wrong. But we're trying to support a project and have a statement about where we believe and where we, I think still the community exists on this project. So I guess maybe I would like a clarification on, is the conversation about the I-5 Bridge? Or it's a third corridor?
Thank you, Counselor Olson, for that thought. I do relate the two. And the reason why is because of the goal of reducing traffic congestion. And until a replacement project would add significantly to the number of lanes going across the Columbia, they are therefore related topics. Because so far, we've heard a reluctance to add additional lanes for automobile traffic, which does not do anything to improve traffic congestion that we have now. And the reasons why Portland is declared through national studies to be the sixth worst for traffic congestion in the nation. So that is why then that spills over to a call for a third corridor. And in fact, as in the little dialogue here that I created, I just introduced the topic of building a third corridor by giving Portland's reluctance to widen the I-5 significantly. Clark County Council supports that's to be seen. Repairing the I-5 Bridge for safety while maintaining all existing I-5 lanes for auto traffic and simultaneously planning for construction of at least a third corridor across the Columbia for auto traffic. And then it goes on to talk about how implementation of that plan would need to take place as soon as possible. We could say immediately, but as soon as possible, whatever the language. So that's how the two are actually crossover and totally intertwined.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Olson?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I, I too think it's important that we make some statements about, again, about the I-5 Bridge replacement. As it is right now, that is the plan to go forward with that. But as we plan, that a third corridor certainly should be mentioned. And I'm hopeful that regionally work can be done on planning this. It's, and, and I think it's important that the county that actually is the county that's where this bridge replacement is taking place should have, you know, some clout, I guess, for lack of a better word, to actually add to the discussion. So that would be my thought. I mean, we do need to include the other because it's, otherwise it's just sort of being blind about what, what really exists and needs to, needs to happen. There needs to be planning. It's going to take a long time before we actually would have a third corridor. Because planning begins many, many years beforehand. But that should be done as Clark County grows. If we don't set aside an area that's, that is somehow on a map or something, development will take place over it, over the top of it. And then, then we'll have to buy, we won't be able to buy the right away. It'll, it'll be saying, no, it's impossible. So I, I think that planning for that is, is a really important state, saying that we want to plan for that is an important statement. Other comments?
Madam Chair. As far as the planning term, it, it could be shorter than it would have been normally had there not been so many years already invested in planning. The only thing is, it hasn't been focused to the extent that would have been advisable. But one thing that I, I noticed, for example, is that the RTC had proposed even back in 2008, two specific locations for a third crossing. And though either of those, if they were followed up on, since they have been long recommended by RTC, would be examples of how to short circuit the planning process from many, many, many years down to hopefully many fewer years.
True. I know that, that those studies exist. And as we have talked about it in RTC and other, other transportation conversations, I know that we've been told by the county transportation people that this really, the other thing that's very important is that we bring this to our state legislators because it's the state, because that will, will have to actually be a part of this as well. But I, I agree. It, it's on, these reports are there from long ago. And, and it should be expedited. We should use those reports to benefit us. I mean, paid money for it. I'm sure some consultant got a lot of money for that. And so they should be used. I agree. Other comments?
So to put forward a lane of thought that I know is not the majority's position, but I feel does need to be at least stated. I think that a lot of what I'm seeing, and I, having just received this draft from Counselor Bowerman a couple of hours ago, I've only been able to skim it. But I think a lot of what is being requested in here has already, there's already been a lot of work done to show that many of the premises here are flawed. I think that while adding additional lanes very briefly and temporarily reduces traffic, there are plenty of studies that have shown that it really creates induced demand and actually increases traffic and congestion. Also, statements that we shouldn't be relying on increasing high-capacity transit or setting such a high bar for high-capacity transit that it's almost unreachable takes that out of the running as a way for us to help create more transportation options. I think that we do need to replace the I-5 Bridge and I'm supportive of trying to make it, to make it higher capacity. But we need to recognize that we can add a ton of bridges and a ton of crossings, but where people are going is still largely the same. And so there will continue to be congestion along the I-5 Corridor because that is where most of the economic activity is, that people are trying to get to in our region. I think it is much more forward-thinking to try to figure out ways to give people reliable travel times in the near-term future, while also thinking much more creatively about how people get around our region than continuing to rely solely on single passenger vehicles. And I recognize that this is going to be a losing proposition and trying to talk about this with this council. So I don't necessarily need to debate it, but I did want to put on the record that that is a perspective that does have a lot of backing and evidence behind it. And I would be concerned about putting forward a county statement that is not actually in line with what others in the region are thinking, with what other jurisdictions are thinking. And instead, I'd be more interested in trying to work towards something where we can try to find some consensus and be a part of building a project that meets multiple needs, even if it doesn't meet every specific need that individuals on this council have.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to that because Counselor Lance, there isn't a single word that you said that I disagree with. It's just that to be forward-thinking, and we're already 20 years behind, the additional capacity will come from a circular route, something that goes from Longview to Salem. Something that is a bypass, a true bypass that almost every other city metropolitan area in the nation has. We don't have it. And so what you said is absolutely accurate. And I'm including those thought processes and that's what makes it so complicated. You know, it's not just our state. It's not just a state issue. It's an Oregon issue. And that puts it beyond our control immediately. And it's not just a state issue between a by-state. It's a national issue because this is a strategic corridor along the West Coast. And I, so I've never viewed 205 and 5 as separate corridors. They're really one corridor along the West Coast. We really truly haven't added another corridor that's in parallel or bypasses this Portland-Vancouver area. Not everyone goes to Portland. Not everyone goes to Vancouver. Some people just want to drive to the north or to the south or to the east or west. So that's where the shortsightedness has come in. We're also focused on just doing what should be business as usual, keeping our capital infrastructure maintained and replaced when necessary, that we've lost sight of the ability to build that other corridor that we really are so far behind on. So it's not really foresight because we've missed that opportunity 20 years ago. We are now trying to play catch-up. So I think it's important for us to speak up and inform the RTC. Let our position be known with Oregon. And let our position be known with our, both our senators and congressional delegates that represent us before Congress. Especially if we do have an infrastructure package that we can dip into or apply to. This is something that we are so far behind in. We need to get caught up quickly.
Thank, thank you for that, Counselor. And I, I don't, I don't think, I'm trying to think about what I said. I don't think that I said anything against necessarily talking about a third corridor. I, I don't think that that will solve many of the congestion problems that you're, that you're discussing here. But I welcome that. My recommendation for a resolution about the Interstate Bridge Project would be that we keep it about the Interstate Bridge Project. And let's pursue talking about a third corridor. I, I, I think that some of the resistance that you have been met with, with regard to the third corridor has been that, and for understandable reasons, a lot of the conversations have been at the time when we're talking about the I-5 Project. And I, I say for understandable reasons because that seems like a reasonable time to talk about it. So, but I think that there is a lot of concern that if we talk about that instead of this, that, that then this won't get done. And so that may be where some of that resistance comes from. And so I would recommend, and I'd be supportive, I am supportive, of having the conversation about the third corridor. I would like to separate them, not because they're completely unrelated, but because I think we'll get further if we talk about them separately.
I, I would agree, Counselor Lance, that part of the reason that there's kind of a fear behind mentioning a third corridor while discussing the I-5 Bridge is that because it was scuttled before, that it could be scuttled again because we're talking about, you know, a different corridor and not the I-5 Bridge. I think at this point, though, it looks to me as if the two states have come to some understanding and that we now have a committee that's working on this replacement. So I think that, to me, it's, it would be timely to support the one and make comments about how that, you know, what we feel about that support or what we agree about. But at the same time, and oh, by the way, realizing all of these things with the difficulties with congestion and with so many jobs, so many people from southwest Washington traveling to the Portland area for their employment. But not only that, even a bigger, a larger problem, which is freight movement from our ports. I just really believe it's an important thing to add so that, so that there is an understanding that we want to look forward. We want to have it part of the plan. And, you know, not, not have this be a scuttling the I-5 Bridge, but that it is, that it's a complimentary addition to, you know, making comments about this I-5 Bridge replacement. So I don't, do we have a, any kind of a, a resolution draft? I think I may have seen one in my email. I, I don't, I didn't pull it up and I don't see it.
Yes, we have a draft from a couple of years ago, but as Counselor Yeah, as Counselor Mevigeek said, I think it's really not an appropriate one for now. So, and it's directed to the federal government spending. It's just a little bit different. So I think we need a new one.
Okay, well, what can I tell you about?
Madam Chair, one, one point of clarification from Kathleen. The resolution that we have, 0905, that was never passed by the council? I guess I misunderstood.
It is a different one. This one was passed. There was another discussion regarding a different resolution that was sent earlier that was not passed, but the 0905 was passed.
Okay, thank you.
And so I haven't seen the other draft. But I, I suggest that if we're going to discuss a resolution, we have a draft maybe following the lines of the thoughts in this thing that you've prepared, Counselor Bowerman. And then look more specifically at that draft. And, you know.
I would second that. Maybe we can get Vincedo to work on it.
Okay. And, and so I just think it's good for discussion. We don't know how it's going to turn out, but, but we would like to have the entire council, you know, comment on a draft that actually is before us. So let's do that. We've got, we'll, we'll start doing that then. Okay, moving on then to counselor reports, HR policy COVID leave.
Good morning, counselors. Mandy Lawrence, HR Director. I'm here today to seek approval to extend our COVID-19 admin leave policy specific to two groups, which is the Corrections Deputy Guild employees and the juvenile deputy officers or the juvenile detention officer, sorry. We, our current policy expired in June, June of 2021. And we're looking to extend for those two specific groups with the new regulations put forth by the CDC in concurrence with public health's recommendations of that COVID admin leave policy. So those changes would be where it used to be employees who test positive for COVID-19 would receive paid leave for up to three weeks. It's now 10 days. The other changes are those who are not fully vaccinated will receive paid leave if they've been exposed for up to 14 days. And then an employee who has symptoms consistent with COVID-19 and has tested negative will receive up to 10 days, which is just a change in, in the recommendation as far as whether or not they get it or not. And this would specifically be just for Corrections Deputy Guild and juvenile detention officers who are in facilities where they're placed with people for long periods of time. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mandy, I have a question on your first two bullets. I'm sure there's a reason behind this and I'd just like to understand what it is. Why do you give 10 days' leave for someone who tests positive and 14 days' leave for someone who is simply exposed and not vaccinated? You see the dichotomy there that I'm referring to?
So those are, we're just being in congruence with what the CDC and public health is putting out. So those are their recommendations. We're not making that decision independently as human resources. That is in congruence with what is happening with the public health is what they're recommending.
Any idea why they recommend that, that discrepancy is there in the number of days?
I don't know.
Counselor, this is Kathleen. I believe in, for the previous conversations with Dr. Malik, the exposure, somebody could still get COVID within a 14-day period, but maybe they're not necessarily still contagious if they have it in a 10-day period. But the incubation period was up to 14 days, which is why if somebody who's been exposed would be on leave for 14 days.
That makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
I think what I didn't mention is we were looking for this policy to expire on December 31st of this year.
Okay, great. Do you need a motion to, yes. Can we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the COVID-19 policy for juvenile and Corrections Deputy Guild employees only as a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mandy. And this, actually, this was inadvertently put under Counselor Reports and I had a question mark in my voice when I said Counselor Reports. Anyway, so it, it should have been under all business. Okay. Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Moving on to counselor reports, redistricting committee. I'm going to just start by saying there has been attorney-client privilege. I'm going to just start by saying there has been attorney-client privilege information passed to us, executive session, perhaps discussion. We will not be talking about any of that during this discussion. Previously, the council has rejected a list from the Republican Party because it was done in an undemocratic form. And we heard from PCOS, others that were upset about the fact that there wasn't a meeting. What we know so far is that a meeting has been called by the PCOS. According to the bylaws of the Republican Party, the PCOS can call a meeting, and that meeting has been called, is going to take place on August the 12th. I know this because I am a PCO. The meeting will take place on August 12th. And I would suggest that we allow that meeting to take place, see if it is fruitful. And at that time, accept, accept a list from that, the results of that meeting and begin to look at both of the parties' candidates for the redistricting committee. We will have to interview those 10 people. And I've been looking at the calendar and want to suggest a time that we might want to do that.
Madam Chair, before we schedule a meeting, thank you. So we also received an email from the chair of the party saying that they've submitted their five names and that they weren't going to
As I said, Counselor Olson, I'm going, no, I'm going, excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you because what the, the chair of the party states in an email has no significance when the council has voted.
Except that we don't have the authority to do this per the charter.
Excuse me.
We don't have the authority. And, and you
Counselor Olson, you're out of order.
I am not out of order.
You're out of order.
I am not out of order. Let me speak. We, we do not have the authority under the charter in any plain reading to reject these names. And I don't know how you support doing that when there's no authority in the charter to do it. Our business is not to control either one of these political parties as county council members. I understand you and Counselor Berman are PCOS. That's a separate political process. Our process on the Clark County Council is to do what the charter outlines, which is to accept the names of both political parties, not to get into their business. The chair of the party
We, the council voted.
The council voted, in my view, not legally, so.
So what? The council voted.
Yeah, outside the bounds of the charter.
I'm, I'm sorry. You're not an attorney. And, excuse me, Counselor Olson, the council has made a decision. Whether you like it or don't, you are on the opposing side, so I would assume you don't. So that is the status at this point.
This is going to be an interesting process going forward.
Yes, it will be. Yes, it will be. Okay.
Can I, I want to bring up a related, something that you just said that I did want to air with the other counselors. So number one, I don't want to get into the Republican Party's business, so I want them to complete their process, which I understand will occur on the 12th. But regarding your comment that we need to interview 10 people, you know, we don't often interview everyone. So I'm not sure what we're going to get in the way of resumes or letters from ultimately the 10 people from each party. But I'm wondering if, are we already committed to interviewing each and every one of them or maybe the top three from each list that we ultimately get?
I suppose we could do that, but we would need to have resumes and letters, et cetera, just like we do for other applicants who want to come forward for, for a committee. That's why I said the 10. I have, I have no idea of those 10 people who, you know, I certainly don't know any of the names, the five names that came forward to us from the Democratic Party. I don't know who they are or what their status or what their employment or what their experience is. So I would suggest that, that's why I'm suggesting a time to set a meeting so that we can allow these folks to maybe give us a letter of why they want to and then ask similar questions, just a few questions of them so that the process is a legitimate process of selecting. I'm not sure that we should, because a party has put forward the names that we should immediately reject any without even seeing their, their reason for wanting to participate or maybe their experience or, see what I mean?
Yeah, so obviously, there's, there's no detail at all in the charter on any of this. So what does everyone think? How do you want to do it? Do you want to just simply interview all 10 or require some paper, paper from those nominees? I mean, what do you want to do?
I believe that we should do both. And I don't know that they need to be done in serial form, but at the time of the interview, we certainly need to have, if we interview all 10, their resume and a letter of interest in front of us. So if their meeting is on the 12th, if they were to submit their names by the 13th, we do meet on the following Tuesday. Would it be a Tuesday that we have the interviews or would that be on a Wednesday?
I suppose we could do the, the interviews on a Tuesday. That would, our meeting in the evening, our, our meeting on the 17th is in the evening. I know I have a certification of the election meeting at 2:00 PM that day, but we could take the morning, couple, three hours in the morning or however long. I don't expect that the interviews are going to be like our judge interviews. You know, it's going to be a much shorter process, more like library, you know, board members or, or other, you know, other committee member, you know, committees that we fill as counselors. So, and, and I would, I would see that if we can't do it on the 17th, unfortunately, I have, I will not be in on the 18th for that council time. But I would, we could do it the following Tuesday or Monday, the 23rd or the 24th. That gives that these, this group of people three weeks to come together, have their meeting prior to September 15th, which is the deadline that they really need to meet because they need to select a master prior to November 15th, when they will receive from the state redistricting committee, the, you know, the information in order to keep precincts, not to divide precincts or make tiny precincts.
So that timeline sounds okay. I just want to make sure we don't revisit what I perceive to have started this series of unfortunate events with one of our parties that we don't throw, and we need to keep it simple. So we don't want to throw additional requirements on the nominees and then give them a really short time to respond. I, I just, I want to avoid that. So as long as there's enough of a timeline with the revised dates that makes it easy for everyone, including us, because we're going to have to come up with questions again. And even that was a somewhat pressured, where the judge, I, I think that went well, but I think it was somewhat pressured at the last minute.
I think it would be incumbent to, at this point, send communication to the, to the candidates that they should put together a letter and a resume, a letter of interest and a resume now so that they're prepared beforehand and, and ready to go when we select a meeting time to interview them. Regardless, regardless of what lists are used, if for some reason the, it is unsuccessful on the 12th or for the meeting that's been called, somebody on the prevailing side can call for a reconsideration of a vote. So that, that is our backup for that.
Madam Chair, having the, having the letter of intent or just a very brief letter of intent with a resume from the candidates, I feel is really good because it reconfirms their actual interest in serving if selected. And so that is, is an important step in, in this process.
Thank you. I agree. We should hear from them, something from them, not just see their name and know nothing else about them. So that will help us with the selection process, so.
Okay, well, I'd agree with that. And certainly, we don't know the outcome of any meeting on the 12th. It may be the exact same list that we get, so they should know that, like the other nominees, they need to prepare the letter.
Exactly. Agreed. Yeah, agreed. That, that should be communicated.
Madam Chair.
So.
Good question.
Counselor Olson.
Taylor, you're on the line. I think you're on the line. Taylor?
Actually, anything you ask Taylor, I think would have to be in executive session.
I don't think so. Madam Chair, let me just ask my question. I see you, Taylor. So when we were in the Board of Health a few weeks ago, I asked Amanda at the time whether we had the authority to do something that was, that the council was considering doing with regard to requiring identification for COVID vaccinations. And we got an opinion or we got an answer from our attorney at the meeting. So I'm just going to ask the question. You can answer it or I answer it, you know? Do we have the authority as a county council to reject these names from either political party?
Yeah, so that's, that's going to have to be in executive session. And the process is still ongoing with the Board of Health. Because we never got a, a well-reasoned or researched opinion on that question.
Oh, we didn't? Okay. I think I'm asking our attorney.
In executive session, if at all.
This needs to be discussed.
If we do that right now.
I think I was asking our attorney, maybe he can answer the question.
I'm sorry, Counselor Olson, you are out of order. And you have been told earlier that we're not going to discuss this publicly. We will discuss it in executive session if that is necessary. So that, I think we're done with this subject except for a date on which we interview 10 candidates that have sent us their letter of interest and a resume. Is, would counselors be available on the 17th of August before any time in the morning until 2:00?
Yes.
I'm not available.
I'm sorry.
All right, I'm not available that week.
Counselor Lance?
I could be available that Tuesday, starting at 10:00.
10:00, okay. Okay, why don't we, why don't we try to set it then between, you know, with the, the appropriate time? Whether it's 20 minutes, I, I don't know what you think is appropriate to be able to interview, but 20 minutes for 10 people. See, that's the math there. We're going to be able to get it done. Let, let's set it for 10:00 AM then on the 17th.
Counselor Lance, enough time from your commitment earlier in the morning to set it right at 10?
Yes, earlier than 10:00 would be hard, but 10:00 I can make.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Berman.
I believe we would also need to set a date, whether it is the 13th or the 16th for those names to be submitted to, to you.
Yes, I would say the 13th or the 16th. The 13th, if they, if the meeting goes and there is a selection and acceptance of that, either on the 13th or the 16th. Is anybody available? Is everybody available for a meeting on the 13th? Let's say a, a short meeting. I don't expect it will be that elongated. Perhaps, what, 10:00, 12:00, 11:00 o'clock or 1:00?
The earlier, the better for me.
Okay, 10:00? Are, are people available at 10:00 AM? Is counsel available at 10:00 AM?
I'm available at 10:00. I did, I do have earlier commitments that morning, but 10:00 would be fine.
I would say it would only be about a 30-minute meeting at the
What is the purpose of that meeting?
That, the purpose is to accept a list of candidates.
I, I would not be available that morning. But I don't know that you, you need me for it.
Okay.
What, what's that? Oh, the resumes and?
No.
No, that's
No, no, it's, it's a list. Well, we have three available. That's a quorum.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we would even need to have a meeting if we follow the charter.
So 10:00 AM on Friday, the 13th. Hi, yai, yai. We'll set a meeting to accept a list, whichever list it might be. So, and then on the 17th at 10:00 AM, we'll, we'll set up interviews. And I'll see to it. And I know Kathleen, you're listening in. So maybe, you know, a letter can be drafted right away and sent to these candidates. I'm hoping that we have their contact information so that, so that we can send a letter asking them for, for their resume and a letter of interest. And, and set up, tell them that we're planning on doing interviews on the 17th as well. Okay?
Will do.
Thank you.
I have a question. Will the intent be to make a decision on those individuals on the 17th? Do we also need to schedule a meeting for that decision or perhaps try to do it at council time the next day? Just trying to think about all of the things that have been coming up at the last minute lately.
I, I would expect that we should be able to make, you know, have a little deliberation and make the decision on the 17th. That would be my hope. If we would have to extend it, I'm not going to be available on the 18th, so. So I'm hoping that we can complete this on the 17th. And if not, it may have to be the 23rd or the 24th, which still gives these candidates, these folks to meet, it still gives them three weeks to set up a meeting together in order to meet prior to September the 15th, where they get together, kind of organize and, and try to start talking about a master. They have 30 days in order just to find the master, which is the fifth person who's going to chair the committee. So they'll use that, and they should meet by the 15th, as I said, because our auditor has told us that the 15th of November is the deadline for the state redistricting committee, which will give them the information they need in order to start their work. They really don't have a very long time to complete their work, obviously. It's, you know, November 15th to December 31st. So they will have to, that'll be one of the questions. Are they going to be able to give the time during the holiday season and everything else to be able to, to meet in order to do this? Because it's, it is a little complicated. In order to do this, because it's, it is a little complicated. And they're gonna need help from G I S, etc., so. So that, it's my hope, Counselor Lance, that we will be able to deliberate and name them on the 17th, but if not. We could do it on the 23rd or the 24th, we could announce the. The the committee, the the four, the four.
Okay, so as as far as staff. Wrangling our schedules and that sort of thing, just making sure that we account for that in our in our timing and everything we need to publicly notice and and all of that, and just to. I have a roundup to just make sure that we're all on the same page on one thing, and then a request. On the roundup, and it has been stated, but I think I just want to make sure, so just asking staff to contact. For the for the Democrats, we have a list of names, so contacting either those individuals or the person who sent the information in to. And then for the Republicans, contacting. At this point, I guess, the party, to let all of the. Candidates know that we're looking for. Letter of interest and resume, so that everybody gets that information and can get going on it and get it to us. And that we will need it by. At this point, we're saying the 13th, but. So that they have a deadline. And my, and I've I've seen nodding, and I think I'm not saying anything different than what was earlier said, I'm just recapping. My request. Given the. Stickiness of this process so far. My request is that once we get through it, and I know we aren't through it yet, I'd like to have staff, and by that I mean someone from the county manager's staff. With an assist from legal. To write down a recommendation for us on a process, I know that we won't have to deal with this again, it won't come up for another 10 years, and probably none of us will be on the council at that point. But I'd like to do a little after action on this, as we discover these places where we don't necessarily have a lot of prescriptive language. And we're kind of developing processes as we go, how can we leave this a little better for the future? And if it turns out that this leads to a recommended charter change that we want to put forward, then perhaps we could do that, but I'd like to. Once we get through this with, which may be a bit off in the distance. Do our best to get our arms around it and move forward well.
I couldn't agree with you more, in fact, I wish we had kind of known this. In time for us to put forward an amendment to the charter, I mean, we could just take. The R C W. And place it into into our charter, it it just was left like actually many things. Stitchy in our charter, so.
Yeah, I I mean, this this isn't even a devil in the details kind of statement, this is just basic. Charter language being missing, I mean, one of the things that struck me right away was, well, you know, there's more than. The Democrats and Republicans, there are other parties out there, and. You know, it it should be nonpartisan, there should be a nonpartisan. Work, working group, and so, yeah, I I think. We really need ultimately to look at a charter amendment to flesh out the detail and increase the fairness. And 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 very basic ways, so. I mean, I know everyone did the best they could with the first charter. But boy, we, once we see it in play, you realize, oh, my gosh, look at all the detail that's missing. Even basic details, so I I agree with Counselor Less and and the Chair as well, I think this, we really should dig into this after the fact.
And then then, I don't know if, I'm sorry, Counselor Bow, I just want to go to that, that's. The other thing about the deadline, as far as for the letters and the the letters of interest and the resume. Counselor Lance, you said the 13th, but I'm I'm wondering, well, I think we could give them till the 16th, if we have, if we can have those.
As long as we had them in time, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is, that there is the conundrum, that. We don't have a chance to look at them, I I mean, we could ask them for them by noon the 16th. That gives them a little bit more time to put it together, but if. If the, you know, you may, the council may want to have them by the 13th, and we can ask that, we can certainly ask that of the. The names that we have now, that gives them a little bit of time to get it to us. Is, what is the preference of the council? I agree, it would be better to have them by the 13th. So, but. What are your thoughts?
I I feel personally that it almost has to be the 16th, at whatever time you said, because if we, if if they are not selected. Until you said Thursday, and then we said that this was required from them on Friday. That is a pretty difficult timeline, in case there are some folks that don't have a resume ready to go, so Sunday is probably pushing them enough. And I also wanted to comment that I I also completely agree with what Counselor Lance had had said earlier. But I'm wondering when Kathleen is the next go round for submission from the council on charter content? That would be able to go to the voters. Following that.
I'll need to actually look at the charter on that, I don't know if it's an annual process or how often, so I'll take a look at the charter language and I can send it to you.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was actually thinking it was every five years, but the council committee, the charter. Committee may be putting forth a an amendment that will make it more often than every five years, I think. But I need to see the wording, it could be every 10 years after the first five, so. We'd really be in trouble then, so.
I believe, I believe, and definitely Kathleen should check, because it's been a little while since I read it, despite having been a part of it. In the current charter, the community updates of electing commissioners, etc. Currently, after this first five year period is every 10 years, and one of the recommendations they have is to change that to five years, because 10 seems like it would be too long. I believe that the council. Can submit any time, so we could put something on next year, I believe they have to be in a general election, but. Beyond that, I don't know that it's otherwise restricted.
Counselor Lance, that's correct, yeah, it's the current charter is the first five years and then 10 years thereafter, you're right, the Charter Review Commission is considering. Shortening that timeframe, and the the council can put forth at any point in time, as can the public, there is a process for the general public to do so.
Well, that's good news, I think we should do as Counselor Lance suggested. And have a good look at it and talk about this so that the next general election, this is on the ballot. For us, so that it is in there the next time. That this comes about. Okay? All right, other council reports.
Chair. This is Taylor Holbert, can you hear me?
Taylor. Yes.
That's all, I just wanted to do a quick audio check, thank you.
Okay. Any other council reports? Okay, work session requests. Lindsay.
There, there is one work session request before the council today, it's regarding speed limit changes. Public Works would like an opportunity to discuss the process of evaluating speed changes and review specific locations. For proposed speed changes, all speed change limits are required modification of the current code, so they are wanting to present. The information they have today to the council and get some guidance before they schedule a public hearing amending code.
Okay. Without objection. We will set the work session for the speed limit changes. And I don't hear any objection, right? All right. Lindsay. Policy issues, any for us?
Two things for you this morning, the first on the Molton Falls, Handwick, Michigan Trotter, it's gone by a bunch of different names. The D N R timber sale that they were planning on doing, first, we did receive confirmation from D N R that they are not going to be doing the timber harvest on unit one. Which is the portion of the property that was right along the Handwick Trail near Molton Falls. So that has been completely set aside, they're not planning on moving forward with that. Additionally, we did hear recently that D N R has completed the appraisal process for some of the other parcels. The property selected for the inter fund transfer between the school and common trust funds, they balance nicely. D N R actually has recently started doing a hybrid in person and virtual meetings to complete the public meeting requirement. So they're in process of looking at some locations to have the required public meeting in September with the goal to then go to the D N R board in October. So I will keep you updated on that, but just wanted to let you know that update. C Pacer, I sent out the draft ordinance, it's quite lengthy. The bulk of it is within the first seven pages, the rest of it is just the. Draft forms and guidelines and the program guidebook that's required by state statute, so. Take a look at that, we're planning on having a council time discussion next week about that. And Taylor or Chris, I believe it'll be Chris Cook, may have some additional thoughts for you on that next week. And then if the council wants to move forward and is okay with the draft ordinance as it is, then we can go ahead and schedule it for the hearing first part of September. On the equestrian front, we've received a number of emails in response to the council time last week, specifically asking for a a list of the particular code concerns. I I think on the basis of what I've seen from those emails, doing a stakeholder process to look at the code concerns may not be the best approach. Just because I think there's, there's some confusion from the equestrian community as to what the code requires, and then there are complaints that. Neighbors are not following existing code, so what we have is a situation where the code doesn't actually say what the equestrian community fears that it says. And the neighbors are saying, my neighbor's not following current code, in which case we don't have a code problem, we have a code enforcement challenge. And, you know, assuming that what the neighbors are saying is accurate, which, you know, we, code enforcement, we need to figure that out, so what I want to do is come circle back with you in one on ones. On August 16th, which is our next one on ones, and figure out kind of what your thoughts are, and then schedule another council time. So that's my proposal there on the basis of the emails that we've received, if that sounds okay with you.
Awesome, okay.
If I could make a comment, so I look forward to those one on ones, but but I think we should. Continue the conversation, all of us, you know. I was hoping that the low hanging fruit, and and maybe the low hanging fruit was urban legend. You know, like getting rid of the curfews, getting rid of the insulation, getting rid of some of the sprinkler requirements, I I thought there were some. A code that really was unfriendly and oppressive. To the equestrian community, and I would, if it is low hanging fruit, I'd like to get to it sooner versus later. On the other hand, you know, we had, we had talked about rural businesses and expanding that from wineries, that kind of. Fell apart after a couple of open houses, and then it just went away. Yet, but there is a common theme from all of this, and it's. Nuisance law, its impact, its. Stormwater runoff, the impacts on our our watershed, you know, I I would like to see. A collaborative discussion with the equestrian community on, hey, we need to get to best practices. You know, we don't want to have every lot tumbled and trampled into manure and dust or manure and mud, depending on. What season, and then have that get into our watershed and create dust for the neighbors, I mean, there are best practices out there that every state and every county. Have weighed in on in different ways, so. You know, I I think it would be great to have the Conservation District do. A presentation to the committee, the stakeholder group, or during an open house, on what those best practices are. Because I'm I'm sure a lot of this isn't intentional, it's just not knowing. So, you know, the nuisance, the impacts, the operational impacts of any business, not just the equestrian community. Is something that is the heart of code enforcement, and we've seen a lot of. Stalled progress. And there may be just, and Kathleen and I have talked about there, maybe there are just areas where code enforcement. Just can't get involved in and can't make promises, give false expectations, you know, just leave it between neighbors. To remediate whether they they need to do it through the courts or mediation. And I want to reiterate, someone in the equestrian community had advocated for creating an equestrian expert mediation group to help. Be that buffer, a citizen buffer, when there are neighborhood complaints, I think all of that needs to be talked about, because that was a great idea. To get us off the hook and maybe provide a remedy between neighbors without them having to. Yell at each other or go to the courts to try to enforce nuisance laws, so I I mean, I, there's a lot. To get done here, but but I really like to see. Any building codes or any codes that are negatively impacting the equestrian community resolved as soon as possible, I would put that on the front burner.
Yeah, and I think, like you said, I think they were unfortunately urban legend, there there are no soundproofing requirements, there, the. The curfew requirements, the time of day requirements for noise, that applies only to the animal boarding facilities, which is domestic animals, so like a dog kennel. But doesn't apply to equestrian, the sprinkler requirements are only for the 12,000 square foot or 300 persons and over facilities, so the largest commercial facilities that we have, and there there aren't that many of those. But I think that there still needs to be discussion about how we get that information out to the equestrian community and how we leverage the expertise that's there to improve the situation, so all things we could talk about in the one on ones, but. I don't think there is that low hanging fruit that we we thought there was, so. The last thing that I want to bring up is the plaque that we had. Brought forward, and I think they're bringing it up now for Sergeant Jeremy Brown, the Sheriff's Office prepared a plaque, but this would be a plaque. For the council to provide to his family in honor of his life and and recognition of the sacrifice, so just wanted to see if this met with your approval. And if so, we can move forward to to order it and get it to his family.
Madam Chair. Essentially, of course, this meets with with my approval at any rate, I do think that the dates, 2006 to 2021. Would be better placed up with the County Sheriff's Office in the, what is that, third line? You know, kind of is the line underneath it, otherwise it looks like a birth year, and. Then, you know, end of watch, but I think if that's associated linked with the Sheriff's Office, that'll make sense, does that? Does that communicate what I'm trying to say?
And I would add to, and you spelled it out, end of watch, you know, I think the general public doesn't know what E O W stands for, so. Maybe end of watch should be spelled out.
Yeah, I actually, I agree that possibly that date should be. Should be higher, because it does, it is consistent with. His service with the Clark County Sheriff's Office, too.
Right.
It isn't his birthday, so. I don't know what others think, it does, it does seem like it might be better placed there. Okay?
I'm fine with moving the the date up, I don't know about, I I I agree that the public generally doesn't know end of watch, since this is a plaque for the family, we know they do. And that's pretty standard as far as how it's referred to, so I. I'm not going to fight against spelling it out, but I don't know that we need to, but I would be supportive of moving it up, so it's under Clark County Sheriff's Office.
I would agree with you, however you guys want to do the end of watch and moving it up.
I, well, I'm I'm fine either way, because it is, it is going to his family, and they do know. So. I didn't know what it meant. Yesterday until I, then I did see somewhere end of watch, so. And speaking of that, it was a beautiful, beautiful service, very sobering. Yeah.
Great, thank you, we'll look forward on that, that's all.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to go into, Counselor, Taylor.
Can I add a five minute? Potential litigation executive session item? To today's.
Yes.
Thank you, and I just for the record, I think, not presuming anything, but I would just say potential. Possible action.
Okay. Oh, potential possible action, okay, afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go into executive session for one collective bargaining issue for 10 minutes, one. one pending litigation, R C W 4231101I, for 25 minutes, and a five-minute potential litigation, did you say? Yeah, potential litigation, five minutes, and there will, our attorney will be present, and there is potential action afterwards. Okay?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
I'm so sorry, I didn't think about this until you mentioned the memorial service yesterday. And it was very noteworthy to me that at least one of the Portland TV stations carried the entire two-hour-plus ceremony. And I thought that was very, very good, given that sometimes their coverage of Clark County is, is not what it could be, even though we're in the service area. So I don't know who did that, in addition to Fox 12, perhaps other stations did as well. But I, I would think it's appropriate that, in some way, they be acknowledged and thanked for having done that. It was very, very meaningful for people who couldn't attend.
Okay, good idea. Was also the Portland, the bank, the bank pipe players were from Portland as well, so. Yeah, good idea. Okay, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and do I adjourn it? Kathleen or Taylor, if there's possible action, or we, if there is action, then we just come and reopen the meeting?
I would indicate that you're retiring to executive session.
Okay, all right. We're retiring to executive session, and if there's action, we'll come back. And our executive session sign-on is in your email. Thank you. Fourth, and there wasn't, there is no action, so we are adjourned. Bye, thank you.